Okay, good evening. The Executive Session of the Wayne Board of Education Regular Meeting of April 12, 2021 was convened virtually and hosted in the Media Center at Anthony Wayne Middle School, 201 Garside Avenue, Wayne. The Statement of Compliance Setting Fourth Time, Date and Location was read in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act and the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Putup, please rise for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, and I'm sorry for the delay. We had an extended executive session. Roll call, Mr. Moffett. You there? Mr. Moffett?
Yes, would you like me to call roll?
Please.
Mrs. Albanese?
Here.
Mr. Bubba?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mrs. Kazan?
Here.
Mrs. Kumar?
Here.
Mr. Pavlak?
Here.
Mrs. Putup?
Here.
And Mrs. Shear?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Toback, would you like to introduce our recognition program first?
I'll start with an opening statement, and then we'll get to the music recognition program. So, good evening, everyone. Board of Education meeting is being held at Anthony Wayne Middle School again this evening, although, other than for a handful of district employees and board members, it is largely a virtual meeting, as has been the case throughout the pandemic. The meeting is open for public view and public participation using Zoom, and is also broadcast on Channel 77. Tonight, we have a special program to recognize the students who are receiving the 2021 Music Honors Recognition. I will be joined by Mr. Paterno and Mr. Betis for this special program. Congratulations to all of our Music Honors Recognition recipients. We're so proud of each of you. I'd like to start off by recognizing music teachers and supporting administrators who inspire these programs and developed our students into the stars they have become. High school level Alvin Scott, Cara Palomba, Gabriel Betis, Keith Warfield, Lisa Rusin Nielo, and Matthew Paterno. At the middle school level, also Cara Palomba, Christopher DeWilde, Dennis Puzek, Janine Passacato, Laura Medley, Lisa Rusin Nielo, Nicholas Vigletti, and Robert Vogel. At the elementary school, Christina Betis, David Mecca, Edward Essa, Elizabeth Murray, Emily Whitmer, Hannah Svensson, Giuliana Filp, Michelle Hughes, Patricia Merucci, Danielle Valencia, and Diane Dautat. For the district string ensemble, Sheila Mendel. For our administrators supporting our music program includes Benjamin Glass, David Allmack, Ethan Mayen, Jennifer Grimbliss, and Matthew Quiley. At this time, I'd like to turn the recognition program over to Mr. Matt Paterno and Mr. Gabe Betis for this important program.
Hello.
Welcome, Mr. Paterno.
Thank you very much. Just my computer said "rejoining," so I wasn't sure whether I'd come apart. Thank you to our school administration, Board of Education, and Wayne community for taking the time to honor the achievements of our outstanding music students. We are especially proud this year to continue the tradition of the Music Honors Recognition Program, as this year has required not only the usual dedication by our students to succeed, but an incredible resilience and refusal to give up. The "how" that our music students have used to learn this year has definitely changed, but the "what" and, most importantly, the "why" have not. Their passion for music, performing, and success has stayed constant and served as an inspiration to those around them. In a year when the traditional area, region, and honors ensemble simply could not be held, our student musicians could have easily languished. Instead, they sought out different opportunities and avenues to distinguish themselves in our music programs, our schools, and our community. A special thank you, as Dr. Toback said, to all of our music staff for helping these students reach this point, and to Naria Kira and Patty Cuviallo for putting tonight's program and the certificates to recognize the students together. Now, I'd like to recognize the musicians being honored by Wayne Valley High School and turn it over to Mr. Betis.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for your continued support. As Matt said, it's been a challenging year, but we are thankful for all the hard work that you've done to this point. So, we're at a point where we can keep making music, and we can keep providing our students the experiences that they deserve. So, starting with our students, most of them participated in the New Jersey Arts Solo and Ensemble Festival, and it was a great virtual opportunity that was created just this year with over 1,000 students participating from all over the state. So first, we have Jacob Cho, who participated in the festival on bass/clarinet. He was also selected as a state finalist and will be submitting another recording on May 15th to see how he ends up placing within the state. Next, Winston Lee on oboe and English horn, also a state finalist for the Arts Ed New Jersey State and Solo Ensemble Festival. Winston Lee was one of eight students in all of New Jersey to make state finals on two instruments. Dan Leschinsky, a very fine musician, and he's been a part of our program for four years, was just recently accepted on a full-ride scholarship to the exclusive William Patterson Jazz Performance Degree, and we are very proud of his achievement for making that happen. Next, we have Isabel Mailman, who also was selected as a state finalist for alto and tenor sax for the Arts Ed New Jersey State Solo and Ensemble Festival. She was one of the other eight students that were made state finals on two different instruments. Next is Joanna Saxon, who also was a participant for the New Jersey State and Solo Ensemble Festival, but was also selected as one of the best musicians out of the entire state of New Jersey for the All Eastern Honors Ensemble, which is the entire East Coast, so she is considered one of the best musicians on the coast. Justin Sonnet was selected as a state finalist on snare drum and marimba for the Arts Ed New Jersey State and Solo Ensemble Festival, three, the third of only eight students in the state to make the state finals on two instruments. He's also been accepted for the exclusive Sound Engineering Arts Degree Program at William Patterson. And lastly, for our students, we have James Soon, who is a freshman oboist who participated in the Arts Ed New Jersey State Solo and Ensemble Festival as well. So, those are the student recognition for Wayne Valley High School instrumental music, and I'll pass it back to Matt Paterno.
Thank you. Again, one of the things we're most proud about of these students is that there was really nothing on the line except their intrinsic motivation and their love to do this, and it's something that was really heartwarming this year, especially as a teacher. First, I'd like to recognize clarinetist Matthew Cialletti-Matza Jr., who participated in the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival. Senior Miriam Gaz, who plays both Barry sax and clarinet, and she also auditioned on a solo for the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival. Jared Kay, a junior trumpeter, who auditioned for the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival and also was trying out for region jazz. Taylor Keenan, senior clarinetist, who participated in the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival and received a music scholarship to University of Delaware to study music at. Pritham Kumara, freshman, up-and-coming young musician, trumpeter, who participated in the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival. Kevin Valenti, who's one of our prize switch hitters, he performed on cello for the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival, and will be spending the summer performing with the world champion Hawthorne Caballeros on meliphone, which is quite a difference. Also, we have, and lastly, we had our band president, Mr. Ethan Thompson on French horn, who performed for the Arts Ed New Jersey Solo and Ensemble Festival and received a scholarship, a music scholarship, to Fredonia University to study music education. Back to Mr. Betis.
So, along with our individual accolades, I am proud to say that despite all the challenges, we've been also able to achieve a great deal of success with our ensembles within the building. So, obviously, you can imagine that that is a challenging task in this time to be blowing air into an instrument and projecting it, and thankfully, we have the tools necessary to make sure that we're doing that in a safe way. So, starting back in the summer with our marching band, who had an incredible season, and we competed virtually every weekend, recording ourselves and submitting it for adjudication, and then getting ranked among bands our similar size in the nation since there were no travel restrictions. We ended that season with a New Jersey State championship out of 10 bands in our group. We came in second at Nationals out of 25 groups, and then we also won a Mid-Atlantic Regional Championship, which was, we were one of the best bands in New Jersey, Connecticut, Maryland, New York, and kind of the Northeast. So, we had an incredible season. It was very challenging, and we did everything we could outside. We are proud of the success we had in the fall. Moving indoors coming September, obviously, we were virtual for some time, so we did our best to do that, but our Wayne Valley Symphonic Band put out a virtual concert in January that can be found on YouTube. They also are now preparing for the second half of the Solo and Ensemble Festival. We will be submitting a virtual recording on May 15th, and we are also working with our big band, our two jazz bands, our percussion ensemble, and all our chamber groups, our brass and tet sax ensemble, for what we're hoping to do, an outdoor spring concert in early June. So, our symphonic band is looking at a really successful, and hopefully, get some positive feedback for the New Jersey State and Solo and Ensemble Festival. Our Wayne Valley Big Band, which is our top jazz band, we have two groups participating in the National Essentially Arlington Competition hosted by Jazz at Lincoln Center. Unfortunately, to this point, we were not selected as a finalist, but that's okay because we were in some really great company. We will be getting some really remarkable feedback at some point in the next couple weeks from some of the top New York jazz musicians coming out of Jazz at Lincoln Center and Juilliard. And lastly, our Wayne Valley Percussion Ensemble participated in the Necessary Noise Festival, which will be streaming all of their participants this Saturday on YouTube, and they will be performing virtually, obviously, but alongside Juilliard Pre College, Manhattan School of Music, Indiana University, and some of the top schools and top high schools for music. So, we are very proud of what we're able to do within the building and after school, and we are making all the adjustments necessary to make that safe, but our kids are getting the experience that they signed up for, and we are thankful to you for your support onto that. So, back to Matt Paterno.
Thank you. You know, as Gabe said, one of the things we were most proud of this year is that the kids refused to give in. They wanted to do their thing, and when it came to March Band this year, we did some virtual performances for a tournament of bands, but we also did six or seven home games, as home games would pop up on Thursday night, and that was supposed to be an off weekend. And when I called the students at 8:30, they'd be there on Friday because they really wanted to perform. We were very thankful for that. They did a great job. We also got the opportunity to play for some other school events, girls' field hockey, varsity field hockey game, varsity girls' soccer game, and just get out from what we normally did into showing off the students for their peers as well. Our symphonic band, we were able to keep up a very important tradition to us of holding our annual Band Through the Ages Concert virtually with Skylar Colfax Middle School, which gives us a chance to do some recruiting, but also just for the parents and the kids to see where they've come from, where they've gone, and that was a big undertaking, but also just a great deal of fun, and I thank Mr. Vogel and Mr. Puzek for helping with that. Our jazz band has been rehearsing and gotten to put some recordings together for our school, but was also asked by several people in the community for April, which is Jazz Appreciation Month, to put together a short 12-minute concert, which we did, and we had a great deal of fun doing that. Again, they just want to play, and they want to enjoy it, but seeing real improvisational soloists and stuff like that was very good. And lastly, our winter guard, which is kind of like color guard inside, has been active. They've done seven virtual performances, one just about every weekend inside, and again, it's all the safety restrictions, masks, staying apart, that these students have to add to a normally challenging schedule that makes it even more impressive that they're still willing to do it. And I think this year has taught us many things about teaching, educating, and learning. Through it all, though, the dedication, commitment, and achievement of our music students has not waned. They have served as a shining example of how to overcome obstacles and how to keep your mind focused on the goal. As Walt Disney once said, "The flower that blooms in adversity is the rarest and most beautiful of all." And we'd like to thank our students for being inspirational to us and hopefully the community, and thank you for the support that it's allowed us to keep giving the students an experience and keep our programs alive and strong throughout the years. So, thank you very much for taking the time and the energy to recognize our students here tonight. We hope you are as proud of them as we are.
Well, thank you both. I really want to thank the two of you, because while the students may have been motivated, they couldn't have done anything like this during a pandemic without your motivation and leadership, and I've received emails from parents who were just so thrilled at what you were able to accomplish so that these students could continue their art, their craft, and thank you both very, very much. Anyone else wishes to speak? Feel free. Anyone? Go right ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Giordano.
To the music program, and especially to the teachers out there, congratulations, and thank you very much to the young ladies and gentlemen who are going to be going on into a place that was wonderful as William Patterson. They're known for their music programs and the other places here. My hat's off to you, especially during this. You literally did it with one hand tied behind your back. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Mr. Pavlak?
Gentlemen, congratulations to all your students as well. You two never seem to not amaze me in what you do. Just when you think we've reached it to the bar, you both of you take it 10 steps further and beyond, and I thank you for that, and I thank you for the dedication that you both have, because you are great role models for our students. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Albanese, go right ahead.
I also want to add a thank you to both Mr. Paterno and Mr. Betis, but also to all of the music educators on behalf of the parents, because I know the parents truly appreciate everything that you do for their children, the inspiration that you are for them, and the effect that it has on them for much longer in life than just through their high school career. So, thank you for what you do today, but also thank you for what you've given them for many years to come. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a great evening and...
Good night, all. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay. Back to you, Dr. Toback.
I'll just continue my report. This week was the start of Phase Five for our reopening plan, so we were off to a great start. We're excited about returning more of our students to school. As we detailed in our previous presentations, we are now operating with two cohorts at the middle and high school levels. We have tents set up at each location, secondary schools, so students can safely eat lunch outdoors, and teachers can also hold outdoor classes as they see fit. All of our kindergarten first and second grade students returned to school this week along with all of our elementary students in out-of-class replacement and ESO programs. Next week, the remainder of our grades four and five students will return. We're excited to have everyone back. I'd also like to give a special thank you to our custodial crew for their hard work and the long hours that they put in last weekend to make sure that all of our desk shields were assembled and put into place. After hearing from the public and the board, we're also taking steps to reopen all of our playgrounds. The first step is to make sure that each playground undergoes a required safety inspection. Once that process is complete, we'll then move to reopen all of our playgrounds. April is designated as Autism Week this month. We're so proud of the programs in place to support our students with autism. This week, several of our Wayne students participated in a panel discussion with Dream, D-R-E-A-A-M, a Disabilities Resource Employment and Autism Awareness Month Virtual Resource Fair to discuss best practices for transitioning to the workplace. Available information and resources were shared. I'd also like to share some exciting news about our Unified Sports Program. Unified has partnered with the Wayne Township Public Schools to develop an esports team for students to participate in, and we anticipate great interest and participation from our students based on the popularity of our other esports programs. This week was the start of the Secondary Intervention Program we put in place for academic recovery. This program offered to our three non-Titel I schools, Skylar Colfax, Wayne Valley, and Wayne Hills, is intended to provide additional academic support to secondary students on a daily basis. Program is designed to support students in two different ways. We have implemented a one-to-one intervention program to support students that are in danger of not passing a major content area subject. These students will have an assigned teacher to work with them during the lunch periods to assist them with assignment completion, individualized instructional support and organization. After-school academic support will also be offered after school each week, Monday through Thursday, for any student that would like to participate. Students will have the opportunity to sign up for the program. This after-school intervention program will offer students assistance with organizational support, assignment completion, and instructional academic assistance. At the elementary level, we've launched our after-school Read Aloud program with sessions beginning the week of May 3rd. Teacher storytellers will be offering Read Alouds virtually to engage students and inspire the joy of reading. Individual themes have been determined by each teacher, with some series focusing on a single novel for the entire program, and others including several short stories, picture books, poetry, and more. I'd like to provide just a quick COVID update. We're pleased to share that the numbers that we report in most of our board meetings continue to trend in a positive direction. So, at this point, we're in good shape with regard to the presence of COVID in the district, and our numbers continue to decrease. With regard to HIB, reporting the following data related to the harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in Wayne Township Public School District. There were seven incidents that were investigated since my last report. Two of those cases were deemed to be in the category of HIB. This concludes my report. You want to mute?
I know. Thank you, Dr. Toback. I'd like to invite our student representatives in now for their reports. If you could admit them, Dr. Burchard? Okay. You want to go first, Gina?
Hi, yes, thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you for having me again. This past weekend, despite many hurdles throughout the rehearsal season, Wayne Valley Theater put on a fantastic production of The Potomac Game. Special thanks and congratulations to senior cast members Jay Sitrulo, Allison Girardi, Frank Ruggiero, Calista Tussus, Arnaud Salmani, Katrina Wallace, Maya Charles, and Aaliyah Henriquez. Wayne Valley has been so fortunate to have such talent. A job well done to the Wayne Valley Boys Lacrosse Team for winning their home opener game on Monday. The boys defeated Pasgak Valley in a 7-6 victory. Junior Colin Revere added three goals, and Senior Brayden Phillips added two goals and two assists. Congratulations to Wayne Valley's star wrestlers, Atila Valley and Robbie Chitirikin. Atila has had an undefeated season so far and was named North Jersey's Male Athlete of the Week. Robbie won his 285-pound category semifinal and finished third in the North One Region Tournament last Sunday, securing him a seat at the state finals in Phillipsburg. Great job to the juniors and good luck. The Wayne Valley Girls Volleyball Team finished its season with a fantastic 11-3 record. Senior captains Lauren Antonio, Anna Bolinski, Alex Colallo, and Giuliana Lavner were instrumental to the team's success and are sure to be missed next season. Senora Colon of the World Language Department has been leading her Spanish five classes in reading and interpreting short Spanish stories. Students have been finding new literary meanings through the nuances of Spanish and virtually sharing their ideas through class description, class discussions, and flip grids. The Student Dance Association at Wayne Valley is back in full swing, preparing tirelessly for their 2021 shows with the theme Road Trip USA. Their shows are set to be held next weekend and streamed virtually for the Wayne Valley community to enjoy once again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gina. Go ahead, Joseph.
Hi, thank you for having me. Students in the Automotive Technology Program have heard the phrase "you learn everything in auto" from Mr. Hopper for years. Recently, science principles of heat and pressure were put to work to help out a vehicle that had an unfortunate meeting with a snowbank, resulting in a dented front bumper. The students learned that plastic bumper components have a memory, and by applying the right amount of heat and pressure, the bumper can be returned to its pre-snowbank condition. After repositioning a splash shield, two advanced auto students using a heat gun and a small pry bar wrapped with tape applied various levels of heat and pressure, gradually working the dent out from the bumper cover. Science meets auto. The following Wayne Hills students have been selected to receive a $1,500 scholarship from the New Jersey Society of Certified Public Accounts. They are Kira Blakeslee, Lauren Galver, and Abby Quagliano. Congratulations to all. Congratulations to all the Wayne Hills FBLA regional and state winners for being named a Gold Seal Chapter. The Wayne Hills Jazz Ensemble performed a virtual concert for the Pompton Lakes Women's Club in celebration of Jazz Appreciation Month. The performance featured three different styles within the jazz genre and many student soloists. The Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard performed in their fifth virtual competition on Saturday. This performance was also attended live by parents and fans, the guard receiving a rating of excellent. Thank you.
Thank you both. Were there any donations for either of you to read in tonight?
There were no donations this month.
Okay. Well, thank you both, and continue to have a great year. We'll see you in a couple meetings.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move on to our first public session. This portion of the meeting is open...
If I can, Kathy, excuse me, would you like me to read the revisions in?
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot you, Bill. Yes, revisions to the agenda. I apologize.
No problem. We have a few tonight. First is Section M, Human Resources, on number three, item number six, ID 4643, revised to read May 3rd, 2021 through May 26, 2021, AM, illness/personal/family illness. That same item, we'll be adding May 26, 2021 PM through November 23, 2021, for maternity. In the Emergent section, under T, Emergent Human Resources, that will revise number one, which is Appointment of District Substitutes, we'll be removing number seven, Sandra Thomas, and it should read D-E-G-U-Z-M-A-N. Number six will add, again, this is adding to the action, which is approval of increase in assignment, and we'll be adding number two. It'll be Gail Wisse, which is W-I-S-S-E. That's the current assignment. It'll be changed to three fifths, S-C-P-A-R-Y, with the PC number of 13-10-38-BTE, account And in the next box over, you would have four fifths, S-C-P-A-R-Y, change in hours. Again, UPC number 13-10-38/BTE, which is 11000262107-00-006, with a effective date of April 19, 2021. And number eight, again, in Emergent Human Resources, we will revise item number four, which is ID 9810, revised to read April 29, 2021 through June 30, 2021, sick days/personal family illness. We'll revise number nine on that number eight, which is approval of leave request, number, I should say, item number nine, which is ID 8715, revised to read April 12, 2021 through April 23, 2021, unpaid with benefits. We'll also be adding, under number nine, which is approval of appointment of district staff, we will be adding a number eight for Ashley Brennan, B-R-E-N-N-A-N, caregiver, R-Y, UPC number 85-10-27/EMT. That's account number 62-603-100-107-18-111. And to the right of that, it'll be April 23, 2021, up to 4.5 hours a day, and it will read new $17 an hour. And that concludes the changes to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Okay. Back to public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mrs. Shear? Mrs. Scher, Mr. Giordano. Okay.
Madam President, seeing no hands raised, I move to close the public portion.
I'll second.
Who just said "I'll second"?
Eileen.
Eileen, okay, so that's Mr. Pavlak, Mrs. Albanese. Moving on to the agenda. We had committees that met this evening. Mr. Pavlak.
The Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening. Myself, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Blanchard, Mr. Moffett, and Mr. Skibitski from the Transportation Department. Much of our conversation dealt with playgrounds and desk shields, which have all been completed and installed in all our buildings. We had a long discussion over the playgrounds, which are going to be, as Dr. Toback said, inspected this weekend. The Transportation Department is going through, we're looking at reorganizing to increase efficiency. We're in the process of having the state inspect our buses as they do every two years, and so far, everything has done well, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Pavlak. Next, Mr. Giordano, did you have a meeting this evening? Go right ahead.
Yes, we did, and we had quite a lineup of people in tonight, including myself, Dr. Toback, Mrs. Kazan, Mrs. Reichman, Mrs. Scher, Mrs. Putup. We also had several members of the administration attending the meeting also. Several personnel items were discussed, which of course, we can't discuss in public, but a lot of stuff was indeed carried out and will be carried out at the next meeting also. If I miss somebody at the meeting, I apologize, there were so many there, and if there's an update needed, I'll update you at the next meeting also.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Anyone else have a report from a committee? All right, I think that's it. Okay, let's move on to the agenda. Anyone care to move the items?
Madam President? I make a motion, we move the entire agenda as a consent?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, that's Mr. Pavlak and Mr. Bubba. Discussion. Before we get to the roll call, well, we'll do the roll call, and then we'll finish up with our retirement blurbs and our resolution. Go ahead with the roll call, Mr. Moffett.
I'm gonna have to be really loud with this.
You're on mute.
Sorry, I thought I lost my cursor. All right, I'll call roll.
Find your cursor.
Right. Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Mrs. Scher?
Yes.
Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
And Mrs. Kazan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have some retirements to read this evening. Mr. Pavlak.
Bertha Castenda, Bertha Castenda will be retiring from the Transportation Department on June 30, 2021. Bertha began her career with the Transportation Department in September 2009 as a van aide. She went on to get her bus license and was hired as a van driver later that year. Bertha has truly been an asset to the Transportation Department. She always made herself available to cover midday routes and any other extra work which was available. For the last few years, she's been driving students to our added district schools while also helping out at the high schools cleaning during the block lunch period in between her school routes. Over the course of her career and her years of service to the Wayne Township Public Schools, she's been dedicated to her work and responsibilities of transporting students with special needs each and every day. Bertha will be missed but not forgotten. From all your friends and coworkers, best wishes for a long, happy, and healthy retirement.
Don Kumar?
Lindsay Wolak. Lindsay Wolak has been a dedicated, thoughtful, and caring public school teacher for over 30 years, the past 20 years as a member of the Wayne Public School District. Through her time in Wayne, Ms. Wolak has worked as an inclusion teacher with both the Science Department at Wayne Hills and the Mathematics Department at Wayne Valley. While teaching, Ms. Wolak has exemplified what we want our educators to be, a role model and a leader for our colleagues who takes pride in her responsibilities as a teacher. Possessing a strong work ethic, she is a team player well-liked and respected by colleagues, administration, students, and parents. Through her years in Wayne, Ms. Wolak has consistently gone above and beyond to support her ever-evolving needs of her students. Ms. Wolak frequently spends weekends planning, grading, and finding creative ways to help her students. Consequently, she has a unique ability to make all students, those who are driven, those who sometimes lack motivation, those who are social, those who have difficulty fitting in, feel welcomed and valued in her classroom. This has truly been her gift as a teacher. For her dedication, professionalism, and care, an enormous thank you to Ms. Wolak on behalf of the Wayne Valley High School community.
Thank you, Mrs. Kumar. Mrs. Scher, did you have one?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Christine Langilli has worked in the Technology Department for over 21 years. During her time, she watched student records that were hand-printed on cardstock and stored in filing cabinets to digital records stored in the cloud. She has been instrumental in the transformation of student data and records through the years. Christine is the type of person who lifts a hand to help before being asked. She is always there to offer advice or share a story from her time growing up in Massachusetts. While the department has never met her aunt, through stories, we all seem to personally know Christine's Aunt Wanda. During the hectic state reporting season, Christine's even keel and upbeat personality reassured us that everything would get in on time, and it always did. Christine's calm and understanding demeanor always made people feel welcomed in the Technology Department. Christine is looking forward to spending time with her husband Ken while they both enjoy retirement. Traveling, eating strawberry shortcake, and catching Imagine Dragons in concert are all on the agenda for Christine. She's also looking forward to spending more time with her daughter Nikki while visiting her in Florida. Christine's hard work and diligence have greatly benefited our district, and we hope that the remaining employees here will strive to follow her stellar example. We wish you the best in your future endeavors. Retirement will surely offer you many new opportunities, which we know you'll embrace wholeheartedly, just as you did at Wayne Township Public Schools. Best of luck to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Putup, last but not least. You're on mute.
The Lafayette Community would like to congratulate Mrs. Venizia on her retirement after a 30-year career in education. Mrs. Venizia obtained a Bachelor of Arts degree in early childhood education and a Master's degree in education, both from William Patterson University. While employed at Lafayette Elementary School, she served as a fourth-grade teacher, a third-grade teacher, and a basic skills teacher for the last 16 years. Liz is very proud to work in the Wayne Township Public School District. When looking for a place to live and raise a family, Wayne was top on her list due to the excellent school system. She was so impressed with that, that she wanted to be a part of it as an educator as well. She is honored to work with such a dedicated, hard-working group of professionals. She often says that one of the richest rewards of living and working in the same town is running into former students and hearing their success stories. Lafayette Elementary School is very fortunate to have such a dedicated and skilled educator like Mrs. Venizia. Her warm and welcoming demeanor helps to make Lafayette such a wonderful place to learn and grow, and she will be remembered as an accomplished member of our school community. After retirement, Mrs. Venizia and her husband plan to travel and spend more quality time with their friends, family, and grandchildren. Congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. It was my pleasure to work with Liz. Thank you.
At this time, we also have a resolution on the agenda, and Madam Vice President, I believe you will be reading that for us.
It is resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approved the resolution urging relief from increased costs to school districts resulting from the implementation of Chapter 44, the 2020 School Employee Health Benefits Reform Law. Whereas PL 2020, Chapter 44 requires the school employees' health benefits program, SEHBP, to offer plans beginning on January 1, 2021, for medical and prescription benefits coverage, including the New Jersey Educators Health Plan, NJEHP, as adopted and implemented by the School Employees Health Benefits Commission. And whereas Chapter 44 established reduced premium contributions for any employee who selects or is placed into the NJEHP as his or her healthcare coverage option. And whereas the SEHBP applies to the following employees who elect to participate in it: local school district, regional school district, county vocational school district, county special services school district, joint commission, educational services commission, state-operated school district, charter school. And whereas the provisions of Chapter 44 also apply to these same employees, even if they do not elect to participate in the SEHBP. And whereas many school districts had previously negotiated health benefit agreements with lower net costs compared to the planned design and cost-sharing requirements under Chapter 44, and/or have staff that previously declined coverage, but now are choosing to enroll in the NJEHP due to its low employee cost-sharing provisions. And whereas a significant number of school districts will experience a net increase in their healthcare costs because the NJEHP premiums are higher than the premiums for the collectively bargained plans previously offered by the district, which is further exacerbated by reduced employee contributions under Chapter 44. And whereas, other school districts will experience a net increase in their overall healthcare costs, even if the NJEHP premiums are lower than that of the previous plan offerings, because the reduction in employee contributions will offset any overall premium savings, resulting in increased net costs to the district. And whereas, the low employee contribution requirements under the NJEHP encourage employees who had previously waived or declined coverage to enroll, thereby increasing the district's health benefit costs for the balance of fiscal year 2021, continuing to fiscal year 2022, and likely beyond. And whereas, these costs may exceed districts' ability to address within their budgets, owing to the limitation of the 2% property tax levy cap. And whereas, Chapter 44 was a well-intentioned proposal that aimed to generate hundreds of million dollars in savings for school districts, school employees, and taxpayers. And whereas, some school districts may indeed be realizing savings due to the provisions of Chapter 44, many are experiencing the opposite effect and witnessing an increase in their healthcare costs, which may result in cuts to critical programs, services, and staff in order to balance their budgets. And whereas, since Chapter 44 essentially froze the level of health benefits and employee contributions for the seven-year period following the law's effective date, districts are unable to control cost increases through the traditional collective bargaining process. And whereas, it is incumbent upon legislature and governor to address and correct the unintended financial consequences districts are experiencing due to Chapter 44, and ensure that all districts share in the anticipated savings. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne Board of Education requests that the state legislature and governor provide relief from the increased healthcare costs experienced by school districts due to the implementation of Chapter 44. And be it further resolved that the relief from Chapter 44 should include direct, short-term assistance from the state to ensure that all school districts are held financially harmless in both the current and subsequent fiscal years. And be it further resolved that the legislature and governor should expeditiously begin to explore long-term structural reforms that reverse the unintended consequences of Chapter 44 and generate lasting savings for school districts, employees, and taxpayers. And be it further resolved that any proposals to amend or revise Chapter 44 include input from all affected stakeholders before moving forward, including feedback from representatives of local boards of education, school business administrators, superintendents, building-level supervisors, and school employees. And be it further resolved that this resolution is delivered to Governor Phil Murphy, State Senate President Stephen M. Sweeney, Assembly Speaker Craig Coughlin, and the 40th Legislative District's representatives, Senator Kristen M. Carrato, Assemblyman Christopher P. De Phillips, and Assemblyman Kevin J. Rooney in the State Senate and General Assembly. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be sent to the New Jersey Association of School Business Officials and the New Jersey School Boards Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Putup. Here, here. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. Can I get a mover? Mrs. Scher, Mr. Giordano.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, it's Andrea McHale, 82 Hershey Road. I was just wondering if combining cohorts at the middle school and high school level is being considered for the remainder of this school year? And on a separate note, I'm a proud Wayne Valley marching band parent, and I just wanted to say that we're so proud of their accomplishments, none of which would have been possible without the leadership and dedication of Mr. Gabe Batiz. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie Cluck, 34 Hillcrest Drive. I just wanted to say that I'm very proud of the marching band and Wayne Valley Band in general. They've always been really great, as well as to say that I continue to voice my support for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Was wondering, I think you said that June was going to be the next time we got an update? Wondering if that still holds true? But yeah, just continue to support diversifying the curriculum and creating a safe, equitable environment in the school system. Thank you, have a nice day.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a mover?
Madam President, seeing no other hands raised, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Pavlak, Mrs. Scher. Dr. Toback, there was only one question. Do you care to address it this evening?
With regard to Katie Cluck's question about an update, we are in pace to achieve our goal that S.O.S. spelled out. And so we will provide an update in June, which is the time we typically review all of our goals. And with regard to the question from Ms. McHale about consideration of combining cohorts, that's something that can be considered. To give it a little time, we just started our next phase, but that's something we could look at depending on where our numbers rest in a few weeks.
Thank you. Okay. Old business? New business? Any board comments? Mrs. Albanese? You're on mute.
I know, thank you. China unmute. Just a couple of quick questions. If we could have perhaps at the next meeting an update as to- as to attendance, in-person attendance throughout the various levels, the elementary, the middle, the high school. I mean, I've heard some high school numbers. I don't know if they're accurate or not, so it would be interesting to see where we stand as far as at the start of Phase 5, how many actual in-person students we have at each level. The other thing I wanted to say is I know there have been many parents, I've heard from several regarding playgrounds. I was very happy to hear tonight that playgrounds are going to be inspected and opened. I think that's wonderful news. It's another step toward moving to whatever that new normal is going to look like for us. But I think very important, particularly for our younger students, to have that opportunity to get outside, to move around, to have some exercise, and also have that little bit of free time that, you know, isn't quite so structured. I think it's great for teachers. I think it's great for staff as well as for the students. So I think it's a good move forward for us, and I thank you for all that hard work.
Anyone else? Mr. Bubba?
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Moffett. So have we gotten any actual numbers on what our health insurance is going to be as far as the increase this year? Because we keep hearing that it's going, it's going to be huge, but we really don't know the answer, and then at a time when we're talking about the budget and we're going to use bank cap, which again, I'll say how much I can't, how much why I can't disagree with that. I would like to know if it's even necessary, because at this point in time, the numbers that we're seeing, things that are in the budget right now, I don't see how we need it. So I would like to know when we're going to know those actual numbers rather than, you know, well, it could be this high, because we go through this every year. It's always, you know, raise the alarms, raise the alarms, and then it comes in under. So I just really would like to know where we're actually going to be.
Yes, Mr. Bubba, we had gone out for RFP. That will require a submission of that on the 29th next week. Shortly after that, it'll be reviewed by our outside broker, and they'll be presenting a recommendation like they've done in the past. I anticipate it early part of May.
So we'll be available at our first meeting of May?
That's the target at this point.
Okay.
Don't we have to ratify the budget that night, if I'm not mistaken?
The public hearing on the budget is also on May 6th. That is correct.
Oh, same thing. Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Share?
I just wanted to say congratulations to both high schools' music programs. Every year, they do a wonderful job. Unfortunately, we didn't get to see our little private concert this year, but I'm looking forward to that next year. Again, I, just like Eileen said, I am so happy to hear that the playgrounds are going to be in use soon. And that's about it. Have a good night.
Anyone? Okay, well, I'll take the move to close. Mrs. Putup, Mr. Giordano, thank you everyone. Have a great evening.